And we would like to begin. We would ask that Pastor Yolanda Chanel, will you come forward and join us? If you're able to, I know she's doing double duty tonight, because that's what we do as mothers and grandmothers in our village, for sure. And I would ask that you all stand, and in one heart and one accord, join me with, as we welcome Pastor Chanel to do the invocation, we would ask that you please remain standing. We're gonna do an a cappella, one verse version of the Negro National Anthem, also known as Lift Every Voice and Sing, which is located on the back of your program, so everyone can participate. Pastor Chanel?
Amen. Praise the Lord, everybody. Y'all don't mind me and my prayer partner, do y'all? Mom was running it a little late today, so I'm just doing what I do. Amen. If you would bow your heads with me, our Father and our God, we thank you and we bless you, oh God, for not enough seats. It shows that you still have your eye on Yonkers, there's still people supporting them, and there's still those of us that love this city. We want to thank you for this occasion. We want to thank you for Black History Month, God. We want to thank you for recognizing, oh God, the work and the accomplishments, not of those that just have done, God, but those that are continuing to do the work. And so we ask you, Father, in the name of Jesus, that you would bless this occasion. Lord, let it be a motivation, let it be fueled to our fire as we go forth in this city, oh God, advancing, oh God, building, and doing the work that you've called us to do. We just bless you. We thank you for our leaders, God, our city officials, our mayor. We thank you for our spiritual leaders, oh God, and all those who take charge in this city. We ask that you would continue to keep your eye on us, continue to keep your hand on us, continue to bless us, Lord God, and we will give you the glory. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. And the spiritual word for this evening that we're gonna rock with is "Ashé." Ashé. It's an African affirmation of yes, "Some more to be, Ashé." Ashé. So with that saying, the devil is busy and he's a liar. So our video and audio isn't doing what we needed to do, but we're still gonna do what we need to do to get here. So in that spirit, like I invited you all on the back of your program, we're gonna get this done. Ready? (Singing) Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the misty skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing a rising sun of our new day begun, let us march on till victory is won. Thank you. This is marvelous. Please be seated, everyone, please be seated. If you can find a seat. There's two seats up front, if there's a woman that needs to sit and cool down, there's seats up front. Please do come forward. I'm here to present, my name is Maria George, and I am a staff person for our Yonkers City Council President, Sister Lakeisha Collins-Bellamy. Yes. And I have the distinct pleasure of serving as your mistress of ceremony, guide, and trailblazer through this evening, because we're gonna blaze through and get there. Our council president thought it not robbery that we have a program that honored the people of today that are shaping our history. And when we started to brainstorm, we started to talk about so many names and folks started to come, we started going into different genres, like, well, what about the law enforcement? What about the clergy? And what about the education? And we just started pulling together. So the names that you'll see here and the folks that you see giving honor are representative of what our awesome city has in the think tank and the wealth of love that comes out of Yonkers. And without further ado, the statement of this occasion is our Black History Celebration for the leaders that are shaping history today. This is a celebration of love and honor and thanks and gratitude to the people that stand in the gap and make it happen every day. They don't always get the "atta girls" and the "atta boys," but every day show up to make it happen. We love you, we salute you this night. Can we give 'em a round of applause? So I would like to invite one of our honorees in the field of activism is someone we call Brother Rob. And Brother Rob is a staple in our community. He's always here to provide love and support and music and wisdom. So I would ask him to join me at the podium, because before we move forward, we need to look back, we need to pay tribute to the ones that came before us and bled and stepped and made a path. So without further ado, Brother Rob?
Yes. I'm giving honor to the Spirit of God and to our ancestors and to the council president and her staff and all those who are assembled here. God bless you. And we want to say that African libation is a form of prayer. It's a form of remembering our ancestors and paying homage to them, because we realize that without our parents, without our lineage, we are not. So it seems pretty obvious, but to the African, they take every occasion to pour libations and to say, "We honor you, we respect you, we remember you." So that's the spirit of the African libation. As I have been taught, obviously, I'm born and raised here in the city of Yonkers, not in the motherland, so this is something that had to be shared or taught to me. So in light of that, we do not have water, but we're going to just first say, in Yoruba, and it is simply an opening prayer, just saying that we respect you, God, we respect our ancestors, and we respect Orisha, those guardian angels that we have all around us. So we say, "Mojuba olo demare, Ashé." "Mojuba bo bo Orisha, Ashé." "Mojuba bo bo egungu mbelese olo demare, Ashé." So we open up with those words to the opening prayer, and we're going to proceed with the tribute to our ancestors with the libation, and we're gonna read it just the way we have it here. Through the love of the first mother and first father, we remember our ancestors. We remember them in joy and sorrow. We remember that the air that they breathe is the air that we breathe.
Ashé.
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 Ashé means, "May it be still." We honor those who came before us. Their footprints create the path we follow. We speak their names to give them love and light. We thank those that came before us for the sacrifice, their dedication, the way. We pledge to commit to the goal of freedom, justice, and equality for all. And we say, "Ashé."
Ashé.
Ashé. We pray for clear words and clear vision and clear purpose. Ashé.
Ashé.
So to the clergy, we pour libations and we remember Reverend Clarence Bowman, Ashé. Reverend Willie H. Upshaw, Ashé. Reverend Luther Evans, Ashé, thank you. To the activists, we pray, and we pour libations and we remember. To Clayton LeBeuf, Ashé. To Mary Gaines, Ashé. To Gail Baxter, Ashé. To our sports mentors. To Mr. Boo Wilson, Ashé. To Spanky Rudley, Ashé. Yes. To Louis Madison, Ashé. For educators, Ashé. To Chris Taylor, Ashé. To Dora Turner, Ashé. To Robert Doxey, Ashé. To the firefighters, yes. To Oliver Austin, Ashé. To Bill McQuaid, Ashé. To our politicians, Ashé. To Joseph Burgess, Ashé. And to our law enforcement, that's a long list, so I was told to shorten it up. To Police Officer Tom Brooks, Ashé. To Police Officer James Martin, Ashé. To Detective Stuart Friedman, Ashé. To Detective Sergeant Charles Taylor, Sr., to Lieutenant James A. Barrett, Barry Barrett, thank you. Ashé. To Detective R., to Detective Charles R. Jackson, Ashé. To Police Officer Richard Banks, Ashé. Police Officer Yasko Green, Ashé. Detective Solomon Spigot, Ashé. Police Officer David Lee, Ashé. Police Officer, I'm going all the way. Norman Downs, Ashé. Police Officer Lawrence Bracey, Ashé.
Police Officer Hugh K.C. Hoag, Ashé. Detective Charles Crawford, Ashé. Detective Jesse Taylor, Ashé. Detective Lorenzo Paul, Ashé. Detective Rita Gross Nelson, Ashé. Detective Cole Scott, Ashé. Detective Abdi Ishmael Ali, Sunny Ali, Ashé. Police Officer Sam Belton, Ashé. Police Officer Clifford Smith, Ashé. Police Officer John Osborne, Ashé. Police Officer Detective Charles Morton, Ashé. Police Officer S. Papasan Kante, Ashé. And to all in your heart that has passed on before you in these fields, we ask that you speak their name right now.
Yes.
If there's someone that was a teacher and educator, Ashé. There was someone that was an activist that saved you from those streets, speak their name. Ashé. If there's someone that educated you and helped you see the light, speak their name.
Clifford Cook, Ashé.
Ashé. And any more that's in your heart, we say, together, Ashé. Thank you.
Ashé. Thank you. Thank you, Father. You have to go on and on.
There's only one way. Awesome. Good evening, everyone. Please allow me to introduce to some and present to others. She's still working. The City Council President of the city of Yonkers and my best boss, Lakeisha Collins-Bellamy. Please welcome.
Where's Amia? I liked her introduction better. She took off.
Oh, the little one said, "All hail, all hail, all the people of the earth." Lakeisha Collins-Bellamy.
I'll pay her for that. Thank you, Amia. Thank you all for being here. The outpouring of support is humbling, so thank you all for coming. When we first put together a Black History Month, I definitely have to thank my staff because they took the ball and ran with it. So thank you all. Maria calls herself a staff person. She is my chief of staff, who holds it down. So Maria, thank you. And she is also the daughter of the late Grace Rita Gross Nelson, who we just acknowledged, who was the first African-American woman on patrol. New York State? New York State. So it is Black History Month, you have to acknowledge Black History. On last Friday, I had the honor and privilege of being the keynote speaker at Yonkers Public Schools' Black History Month event, and I saw one group of kids who were amazing and were so excited and ran after their teacher and said, "I need you." Ran her down in the hallway. So they were gracious enough, and their parents, I have to thank you all for bringing them here tonight to grace us with a performance, so you all can see the greatness that takes place here in Yonkers Public Schools. We have music teacher, Mrs. Gwen Henderson. And we have the Hostel School Choir, who will come up and sing a melody for us tonight.
(Singing) Amazing grace, how sweet the sound that saves. I was once lost, but now I've found what's mine. But now I see. Twas grace that taught my heart to fear, and grace my fears replaced. How great and sweet that grace of me, the hour I must believe. Ooh, men, danger, toils, and scares, I have already come. Twas grace that God me saved, thus far and grace will be mine.
I believe in one race, the human race, rolls apart. If you're walking down the white path, if you're willing to keep walking, allegedly you'll make progress. Bravo, wavo.
(Singing) I'm from Freedom for 20th, I'm a single answer, and so I'm from my left, that's where it's all.
I had a reason that I had. It was one, two things that I had. Literally, I said, "If I didn't have her, I would have loved her."
People don't realize how many people are not changing by just one of those, my friend.
The Negro law, beyond, so high.
I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their hair.
Wouldn't it be wonderful if Black History and Native American History and Jewish History and all other U.S. History would be taught by one book, and that's U.S. History, Michael Anthony.
(Singing) Praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God, praise God, praise
(Singing) Ooh, 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 ooh. (Singing) We are marching in the light of God, 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 we are marching, marching, we are marching, we are marching in the light of God, we are marching, marching, we are marching, we are marching in the light of God. (Singing) See, I'm a, 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 I'm And that woman is none other than our honorable Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins, who could not join us today. But we give her her flowers for being a first, a major first here in this city. Additionally, we have Congressman Jamar Bowman, who couldn't be here with us today, but we give him honor. Because I believe he was also the first African-American to represent this council, this congressional district here in the city of Yonkers. Additionally, we have Mr. Gary Pretlow, who's a member of Omega Psi Phi, but he is not here to join us. Assemblyman Gary Pretlow, we give him his honor and praise on today. County legislator, Mr. Christopher Johnson. Who started out with us here on the council representing the first district, but he now represents the 16th County Legislative District. And he's Majority Leader, so that's right. We have three, three African-American Majority Leaders representing the city of Yonkers. That is awesome in itself. Our Majority Leader here on the city council, Councilwoman Majority Leader Tasha Diaz, please join me here. Councilwoman for the first district, Ms. Shanae V. Williams. Say, why am I getting this? Did we print this off? Nope, it just came from my office, so you didn't get to see it. This is black history here on the county and city level in politics. Of course, we honor those that are not with us, but rounds of applause for all of our elected officials here. Activism. I'll get back to them, they're special to me. Extra special. When I say I stand on some shoulders, I stand on some shoulders of the honorable, the first African-American woman elected in the first council district here in the city of Yonkers. Don't look surprised, she gonna say something about the AKA, come on down here, Honorable Senator Brandon. Oh, three, oh, three. You know, okay, my Delta's in the house, don't get us started, we will turn, don't you run away, where you going? She trying to sneak off, you're gonna get these flowers and I will continuously give them to you. Ms. Diana Brown Temple, don't get bashful now, if you know her, she is far from bashful, but whenever you meet her, she is never far away. She is like, she is like a grandmother to me. Whenever I meet her, she's always right there, whether it's activism in the community, working on different events, like working at the Net Breahan Community Center, she is about community. So that's why I honor you on today. Thank you, Martin. Ms. Jonita Crosby, please come forward. This young lady, and I call her young lady because I think I'm a little bit older, but also is heavily involved in our community, whether it's working on the mayor's advisory board, any community event that we need to make happen here in City Hall, we usually call on Jonita. We couldn't call you today because we were honoring you, but please. Exactly, anytime you're planning an event, she'll be the first to lend a hand and that's why today we are honoring you. Thank you. Cousin Eugene is not in the house today. Everyone calls him Brother Rob, whether it is the African-American Heritage Committee, whether we need you to come lay on blessings, I call him Cousin Rob, because we're family, for real. But today, we honor you for your commitment to African-American history, to Yonkers history. We honor you for all you do, for being the president of the African-American Heritage Committee and keeping that memory alive. On today, we honor you. Now you're going up now, don't go too far, we're gonna take a picture. Mr. John Morrison, if you have not heard of Brother to Brother, I don't know what rock you've been under, but we congratulate you and celebrate you. He has now opened a boxing gym right in Getty Square, if you haven't been there yet. What's the number on South Broadway? 29 South Broadway, please be sure. He is mentoring our youth, he is teaching boxing skills, I keep saying, I want to come on down there, but what boxer said, everybody wants to box until they get hit, right? So I just watch. But thank you for all you do for our youth, thank you for all that you do for our community. And so today, I honor you. This is black history activism here in Yonkers. Brother Rob, can you take this with you?
Sure. Thank you, I appreciate it.
We improvise around here. When you feel the spirit moving you and you want to give roses, you come forward and you give your roses. That's right. Education. Thank you. Anyone who knows me knows how I feel about education. Education is the key that unlocks so many doors. Every time I've been in a career that I did not enjoy, I went back to school to get another degree, I think I'm done. That's it. But on today, we wanted to honor our educators, past, retired, present, we honor you all because of the hard work and dedication and commitment that it takes. And I know it takes commitment because I went to and I'll honor my cousin Ronell, Dr. Ronell Eugene Cook, who passed away earlier this year, who was a Saunders graduate from here in Yonkers and was a superintendent of public schools. I spent one day in his class observing a math lesson and I became a political science major. So thank you for sticking with it because I knew that if I was a teacher, I would not ever have children, there was no way. So that is a special God-given talent and for that, we honor you all today. And we will start with Mrs. Jade Sharp. I have to tell you, she called me up and said, I need you to speak. And then I would turn a favor, so thank you for coming out for me today. Thank you for retiring but not being retired and still being involved, that's dedication and that's why we honor you on today. Ms. Veronica Batesmore. We honor you for all your work on behalf of the Yonkers Public Schools. Her girl, even though she's the AKA, read? Just gotta stick together, we gotta stick from the same path, okay? And you didn't send her around the corner?
Thank you so much.
Carol Sally Blakeney. With the fierce haircut. She's an entourage with you, I appreciate all that you do on behalf of our students, all that you have done on behalf of our students, because without you all, half of us wouldn't be where we are. So thank you. Mr. Darrell Mack Senior. You know, the cat was welcome correct, every time you see Mr. Darrell Mack, he is fly. So we appreciate your fly, sir. Thank you for all you do on behalf of the Yonkers Public School students. Mr. Darrell Mack is an assistant principal, one of how many African-American men assistant principals? Very few. Let's work on that. Today, we honor you. Thank you so much. This, he's trying to, this is African-American history and education here in Yonkers. Round of applause for them all, please. Where'd you go? I'm hiding from you. You know, I saved the best for last because I got a compliment on this one. I really did, oh, you, Brian Boyd, oh, you get props for that. So, Mr. Boyd, last but not least, thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you. We're gonna take a picture here. This is awesome.
Earlier tonight, Maria and Brother Rob read off a list of deceased police officers here in the city of Yonkers. Most of them belong to an organization, right, here in the city of Yonkers, and there aren't many African-American firefighters. That is one thing that the city has taken on the task of changing, having more black men and women here in uniform. But when I think of, when I think of the police department, I think of men like the ones that I'm about to honor, as well as present members of the Yonkers Guardians. So on tonight, I will honor Mr. Vincent Tewson Senior, I believe you're at. Thank you. Thank you for all that you've done in your work. Mr. Stuart Barksdale, please come on down. Mr. Joseph Leacock Senior. When you walk down, you all sound like, hey, hey, I don't know why, just. Thank you so much. And Shannon could not be here with us today, correct? However, I'd also like for the members of the Guardians to join them up here. I know there's quite a few in the back. Absolutely. Thank you. This is awesome. This is beautiful. We're all gonna take a picture, so don't run too far. This is African-American history and law enforcement here in the city of Yonkers. Russ, come on and get in here, he's hiding behind the camera, don't do that. Thank you. Thank you all. Did they get, you got it?
I got it.
He's like, I got it? As long as, as long as mine got it. Who's accepting on behalf of the Guardians? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And last but not least, we cannot forget our firefighters. We say there aren't many African-American police officers, but there's even fewer firefighters. So tonight, I want to acknowledge my family, Captain Reginald Cruz. Thank you, Reg. And just like the Guardians are the organization, the fraternal organization for the African-American police officers, there is a fraternal organization for African-American firefighters and that is the Vulcan Society of Westchester. Can I please have the members of the Vulcans join me up front? And speaking of black history, we have the first African-American woman firefighter, Ms. Fatima Taylor.
I must say, pretty young man, but he was a butcher.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for showing me. I just wanted this event to be a highlight, a showcase, especially for our youth, of what your future can look like, whether you're a boy or a girl, a woman or a man, you can be anything you want to be. And don't be afraid to be the first, even if you have never seen it done before, if that is your goal, don't be afraid to be the first. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another day, oh God, we thank you for just this gathering that you've allowed us to come together, to look back on our past, to reflect on our ancestors, to just thank them for the sacrifices that they have made. And then, God, we thank you for the opportunity to just highlight the achievements of those that are with us now, continuing the work, continuing to spread the love, continuing to do all those things that we need so that our community can be uplifted. We thank you now for the council president and her vision for tonight, oh God, we thank you for our black history and may it not be restricted to one month. Now, God, we ask that your blessings would go with us, that you would protect us each and every step of the way, that our homes would be in peace, and then we bless the refreshments that have been prepared for the nourishment of our bodies, and we just thank you for this coming together, in Jesus's name we pray, amen.